The time is now seven o'clock and I call to order and reconvene to open session, the regular board meeting on Monday, February 5th, 2018. Jackie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Carubas?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Mr. Raesak?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Here.
Mr. Rysing?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Carubas, could you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several board salutes and I'm going to start with Ms. Demming.
Wabonzi Valley teacher recognized by Junior Achievement. The board salutes Wabonzi Valley business teacher Steve Penley on being awarded the 2018 DuPage Junior Achievement Superhero of the Year Award. Steve was chosen for his commitment and dedication to junior achievement, his excitement in expanding junior achievements outreach at Wabonzi Valley, participation in the BP Tech Day, and for his hard work in coordinating classes and volunteers. Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you. Mr. Rysing?
Congratulations to the 19 District 204 High School students who were Gold Key Award winners at the local Scholastic Arts Competition. These students advantaged in the national competition. All three District 204 schools had winners. Matia Valley with two gold and seven silver and 10 honorable mentions, Wabonzi Valley with three gold and five silver and four honorable mentions, and Niqua Valley with 14 golds and 12 silvers. Niqua Valley freshman Caitlin Zoo won one of the five American Vision Awards selected from over 3,000 pieces of artwork. Congratulations Caitlin and all the students involved.
Great. Ms. Price?
The board salutes Matia Valley Principal Dr. Darryl Echols, who was recently selected as the Aurora African-American Leader of the Year. The award is bestowed to someone each year who has demonstrated consistent leadership and a commitment to Aurora's African-American community and to the city at large. Congratulations, Dr. Echols.
Great. And Ms. Donahue?
The board salutes Skullin Middle School Orchestra Teacher Matt White for receiving the Illinois American String Teachers Association Emerging Educator Award. The recipient of this award must be a teacher currently in their third, fourth, or fifth year of teaching in a school orchestra setting who has achieved and maintained excellence in their program. Congratulations, Matt.
Great. It's now time for a student representative report. It's going to be done by Alexa Jordan from Matia Valley High School. Alexa, there she is.
Thanks for breathing the snow.
Yes, thank you.
That makes three. Oh, come on. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Alexa Jordan and I'm the Class of 2018 Executive Board Representative for MV Student Government. It is nice to be back and I hope all of the board members had an amazing holiday. And 2018 is already flying by. Matia Valley has had many new developments in the past couple of months and I'm very excited to share these with you today. So on January 15th, more than 200 Matia Valley students dedicated their day to serving their community for the Barton Luther King Junior Day of Service. This event coordinated by Student Government Committee, DMV, is an annual day of service for the Mustangs. Sports teams, honor societies, and other MV clubs came together to volunteer at the Marie Wilkinson Food Bank, Loaves and Fishes, Feed My Starving Children, the SciTech Museum, Aurora Public Library, Hasset House, the Vista Nursing Home, the Aurora Interfaith Food Pantry, and Wayside Cross. That was a lot. Later that evening, three Matia students were awarded the Mayoral Service Above Self Youth Leadership Award by Mayor Irvin in Aurora and the Matia Jazz Band played at West Aurora High School. This past weekend, on Saturday, February 3rd, Matia hosted its annual Turnabout Dance. The theme this year was Tiki Turnabout. Our spirit week ended with a pep rally where we cheered for student performances, including cheer, dance team, and orchestras. My personal favorite, though, was the rap battle between some of our faculty and students. You may learn that Dr. Echols has a hidden talent for rapping, so ask him, you might want to ask him to see who he thinks wins, but he might be a little bit biased. So next we go to recognitions. Matia Valley wants to congratulate the MV Robotics Team who qualified for state by placing third at the competition hosted at Niqua Valley High School. Congratulations to President of Robotics, Sohit Thoda, to leading his team to this great accomplishment. And next is congratulations to our speech team who is now moving on to sectionals. We'll provide updates with that in the next report. And next is athletics. Matia Athletics wants to congratulate Senior Ian Ridgway, who placed sixth at state for bowling. Ian is the first male bowler from District 204 to compete at the state level. Varus Tuchir also won the DVC Conference Championship and just placed fifth at state this past weekend. Next for music, ILMEA, 10 Matia Valley students went downstate to Peoria to perform at ILMEA. Kimmy Chong, senior, plays second chair in the top orchestra and Aubrey Curtis, Jr., is the first female singer to qualify from Matia Valley in several years. These musicians are absolutely amazing and are, we are proud that they could represent District 204 and Matia Valley at ILMEA. Matia Valley will also be having 115 musicians perform in the District 204 Annual Solo and Ensemble Festival this year later this month. And MV Theater is performing Winter Scenes this week, which is a four-student-directed play, Making God Laugh, directed by Mattie Myers, Two Heads of a Hydra, written and directed by Darby Sherwood, Telltale Heart, directed by Ben Reed, and Daydream, a Musical, written and directed by Jenny Couch. Performances will be February 8th, 9th, and 10th at 7:00. I hope to see you all there. And that's all I have for the February Board Report. Thanks, everyone, and until next time, go go Mustangs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you are here to speak to an agenda item, that comment will be taken immediately prior to that item. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups. And as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and the opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Our first speaker is Dan Leahy.
How was traffic for you?
Not so good, but important, so. My name's Dan Leahy. I'm a first-year STEPS parent in District 204. And at times during the past year, this is what it feels like and sounds like to be a STEPS parent. So that's silence. There's a lack of communication, unanswered emails. As we come up on 10 months of trying to influence positive change, we're asking administrators, the board, and staff to be accountable for what you say versus what you do. What you say from your own mission and goals is that you're looking to best serve our students through collaboration with families and community. What you do is fail to answer basic communication, fail to truly hear the opinions and ideas of others, and fail to engage and serve an entire population in meeting what's best for their educational needs. I recently learned that District 203's technology program had a district-wide rollout and included tech for the STEPS students as well. In 204, they say that their mission is to inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential. But what they've done is failed to include our students in any technology, any formal technology program or component. This doesn't seem equitable. They failed to collaborate with families and community again. It's still difficult to understand how we got to this point. Overcrowding that wasn't planned for, a building that wasn't fit for our students, safety issues, and a lack of ADA accommodations for the very students that need them most. What you say is that you want to manage the district's programs and assets in an effective, efficient manner and continually evaluate methods and procedures to identify improvements throughout the district. But what you've done is failed to plan for change, failed to identify any clear path to implement improvements, and failed to effectively manage the 204 transition program. The population study is done, the state's passed its budget. Engaged 204 sessions are ongoing, but have already clearly demonstrated STEPS is a priority for this community. The next school year is approaching. These kids, the staff, and the entire program deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Kirstein.
Planes, trains, and automobiles to get here from town. But anyway, so first of all, Board, thank you very much for your service. Good evening. My name is Mark Kirstein. Our family is 19-year resident District 204 with two kids who attended Indian Prairie Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. Tonight, I'm here to ask you to be a change agent, to deliver on your promise to give every person who attends 204 programs the skills to succeed. Please lead. Please be part of the solution. Do not accept mediocrity. I even have a homework assignment for you. You didn't expect that, probably. On your way home, I want you to look up a song, "Born to Win" by Five for Fighting. Why? It's a song of hope, a song of encouragement, a song about winning in life and not just winning a game. It's a song that inspires and recognizes life isn't easy, but every one of us has abilities. And it starts, here's the first line, "The time is now, the stage is set, today you shine." The STEPS Transition Program has been discussed many times here. The time is now to give this community a chance to shine, to make changes. The time is now for you all in administration to admit the program is inadequate, for you all to step up as board members to inspire and to give all adults in 204 a chance. I don't even have an adult in the program because in 2014, my son Liam, we elected to not put him into STEPS because we felt as a 10th grader, the program was not going to be adequate to prepare him for the game of life. The program was lacking now, or then, the program is still lacking now, and it's very disappointing as a community member. 204 is trailing significantly. Sending Liam to the University of Iowa re-teacher program was a personal decision, one that it might not be right for everybody, but one that people should be able to rely on this program here to help them. I'm not going to demand a new building, or more physical education, or computers, or busing, or time in class, or internships. That's not my call. I am going to ask that you guys in administration get together in a fiscal responsible manner with all the volunteers that are willing to help you and help us win the game of life. We are behind, but every one of us wants our son, our daughter, your niece, your nephew, or your grandkids to have digital skills, finance skills, social skills, transportation skills, time management skills, work skills, and healthy habits. Pretty irrefutable. Our young adults today, the past and the future, count on us to give them a chance. We are not succeeding. Why? Because we're not engaging. You all are capable and awesome people. This whole room is capable. Change will not happen without engagement. I'm ready to volunteer. Others are ready to volunteer. It's a very passionate cause. You should expect respectable behavior. You should call out irresectable behavior, but please, be a change agent and lead. You have a chance to make a difference in the community. The adults in STEPS deserve better. The community deserves better. The employers can also benefit from you building a good STEPS program. Naperville will improve. I ask, please be an agent. Help 204. Help the STEPS program succeed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Diana Mayer.
And I think Jack.
Hi, my name is Diana Mayer and this is my son, Jack. Jack is a senior at Niqua and will transition into the STEPS program next year. 14 years ago, Jack was aging out of Easter seals. We lived in Bolingbrook at the time and Jack's cake swaker had said something to me that changed the course of Jack's life. She told me that we needed to move to District 204 in Naperville so Jack could attend Prairie Preschool, the district's one and only inclusive preschool. Jack came to you at the age of three, nonverbal, and with a host of behavior issues. Today, Jack is a global ambassador for Best Buddies International and speaks all over the country educating others about his autism. He proudly tells thousands of people what high school he attends. He stands on stages across the country in his Niqua Valley Best Buddy shirt. I field countless questions and conversations with parents about where Jack goes to school because they see as progress and they want that for their own children. However, I fear I won't be able to say anything positive anymore. On Friday, I viewed the STEPS programs at Niqua. There are 62 kids in that program. They share four classrooms. 62 students, four staff members, and four classrooms. These are kids who already have learning disabilities. They cannot learn nor succeed in that type of environment. I know my son can't. Also, the STEPS program is extremely outdated compared to the other ones I have viewed. We have five children, all who have been educated in District 204. Our daughter will be a freshman at Niqua and will be at the Freshman Center with her 18-year-old brother. As her parent, I have to advocate for her as well as her brother who is disabled. I do not want my 14-year-old daughter sharing a building with men. As much as that pains me to say, it is true. These are men we are talking about. My son will be 18 years old and can't make decisions like a typical 18-year-old. He can't rationalize like an 18-year-old. I'm nervous for both of my children in this type of environment. Again, we moved here to District 204 for their services and it truly saddens me to see the state the transition program is in. As Jack's mom, I want him to be a productive, happy member of society. I can't do that on my own. I don't have the tools nor the skills to. What you do, District 204 does, and we need your help. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jack Mayer and I am a senior at Niqua Valley. As my mom told you, I am a global ambassador for Best Buddies International. One of my job's requirements is to advocate for myself and for others with disabilities. I am extremely anxious about leaving Niqua. I have really bad OCD. My teachers have told me that I need to transition out of high school into the real world. I'm really confused because I am going back to the same building that, where I started from, which is the Burkett Freshman Center. I don't want to go there because I feel uncomfortable about being with my little sister and her friends. I want to try something different. There is so much more I need to learn in order to be able to find a job and take care of myself. I need your help to do that. Thank you for letting me speak tonight and have a voice from a student's perspective on this issue.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Our next speaker is Maureen Conley.
My name is Maureen Conley and I'm a long-term resident taxpayer. I have three children that graduated Wabonzi Valley. It's hard to follow, Jack, so I'm sorry. I started in District 204 in 1997 when my little guy went off to McCarty. I work at the CPA, work full-time, as a controller in Batavia, so I understand the financial situation and needing to pick what's important and having a fixed amount of money and trying to move things around. I understand. My three kids took zero AP classes. They took three honors classes. Everything else was regular ed. If you talk to any of them right now, they'll say they had an excellent education in District 204 to prepare them to continue to follow their goals, to their career dreams. They're all actively doing that right now. It makes me sad right now to hear that there's this issue going on with our STEPS, our transition kids at 204. They too should be provided the same level of education that they need, that they can go ahead and follow their career dreams and their goals and their aspirations. I am disappointed being a long-term 204 parent. You know, IPPC meetings I've attended, school board meetings, reverend and committee meetings, boundary change meetings. You hear a lot of buzzwords in District 204. Excellence is one of them. Collaboration, innovation, thinking out of the box, research shows. You know, we've heard that a lot. Hearing that the surrounding community is doing a better job with our transition students makes me a little upset, a little competitive, and I want the same. We all want the same for our kids, if not better. I think we all agree with that. So I'd really ask you guys that you go back on your buzzwords, continue the excellence, the excellence for all of our kids, not just, you know, the regular ed kids or the Project Daryl kids or the honors kids, all of our kids. Give them all what they need to go ahead and succeed after they leave District 204. Collaborate. Work with their teachers. Their teachers and their parents know them best. They know what tools they need. Their IEP, I don't have a special needs child. They know what needs to be on their IEP. They know what tools they need. Innovation. We can do some innovation. I know we can do far better than what we're doing. When I read what they're doing in neighboring areas, there's ways we can innovate. We can think out of the box, different ways to get money. And I know research shows that if we can support these kids for these two years, they can do amazing things. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Chris Seibert.
Hello, everyone. My name is Christopher Seibert. I'm the older brother of Grace Seibert, who is a third-year student at Niqua Valley STEPS program. I'd like to thank you guys for allowing us to speak today. I come up here today to implore you guys, I spoke here last year, eight months ago, I'm not quite sure when it was, about coming up with a solution from everything, from talking to other parents, and all the reading I've done doesn't seem like much of a solution has come to. And just personally, from talking to parents, some of Grace's, Grace herself and her friends and teachers, no one is happy with the current situation. This is something that needs to be addressed. Personally, Grace has been greatly affected by this change. When, back in fall, when she was getting, when she was getting, when she was adapting to the new, going back to Niqua, it was very tough on her. It was giving her incredible amounts of anxiety. She was starting to act out more. She's incredible, she's someone who's always been very docile, the kindest girl you'd ever meet, and just suddenly she started sending inappropriate text messages about being upset, wanting to harm other people. I was, only time in my life, we were driving home after our movies on a Sunday afternoon and she started hitting me just unrelenting. It was unlike anything I'd ever seen or experienced from being around with her and it was terrifying. And we actually took, ended up taking Grace to a psychiatrist and psychologist to get her evaluated, see what was going on. And it turned out that the biggest issue that was changing her behavior was anxiety due to this change of going back to Niqua and being separated from her friends that go to Matia and go to Wabonzi. And for individuals like Grace, change is so difficult for them and being separated from their comfort zone, from the people who decrease anxiety, from the individuals that make them happy, it's just not right. And I implore you guys to come up with a solution. Grace will only have one semester left by the time anything can happen, but it's not about Grace, it's about Tyler Leahys, it's about the Jax, it's about the kids coming forward who need a place to go where they feel safe and they feel included and they don't feel like outcasts in their own school. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to our consent agenda and superintendent report, we'll begin with our superintendent report.
We have marketing students in all three District 204 high schools. They've been working on an authentic learning experience in partnership with the City of Naperville and the Naperville Development Partnership. You know, we've done this with the City of Naperville for a number of years. The 2017-18 project has asked students to develop a branding and a marketing and advertising campaign for the Route 59 retail corridor, which spans from 75th Street on the south to Jefferson and Liberty on the north in both Aurora and Naperville. The students were given a budget of $500,000 for the campaign and teams from Niqua Valley, Matia Valley, and Wabonzi Valley will pitch their campaign to a panel of judges during the day on Tuesday, tomorrow. The top team will be announced at the Naperville City Council Meeting tomorrow night and the judging panel includes the mayors of Aurora and Naperville. I think Mayor Irwin is actually right over there. He's judging tomorrow, so he'll be on the spot tomorrow. So good luck to all of our students who are participating. We have 49 teams competing this Saturday at the Burkett Center during the middle school robotics tournament. Teams include schools from District 204 and surrounding districts. And Congressman Bill Foster is stopping by to open the event at 9:00 AM. He tries never to miss a robotics tournament, I think. The event is open to the public and I would encourage you to stop by to see our students' skill as they maneuver the robots they built for this year's competition. We have two more engaged 204 sessions in the coming months. Our next meeting will be on Monday, February 26th. It's still middle school from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. This meeting will focus on the state of our facilities, so we encourage everyone to come out and participate in these important meetings and look to our website for more information about engaged 204. And then we have an administrative position to bring to you tonight, so are you okay with me going to that now?
Yes.
All right. So as many of you may know, Stan Grabachkin is retiring at the end of this school year as the head of our Technology Services Department, and his will be big shoes to fill, but we believe we have found just the person to do that. So Adam, I'm going to ask you to stand so everybody knows who you are. Adam Smets comes to us from higher education where he's currently Assistant Vice President and Deputy Chief Information Officer at Dominican University. Adam also has held technology positions at Loyola University and the University of Delaware. He holds a bachelor's degree in English and secondary education, a master's in educational technology, and currently working on finishing that doctorate, right, in curriculum and instruction. So tonight, we are excited to recommend Adam Smets for your approval to the position of Chief Technology Officer.
And I need a motion to approve Adam Smets as Chief Technology Officer.
I move that the Board of Education approve Mr. Adam Smets as technology, Chief Technology Officer as presented.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rysing?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Carubas?
Yes.
Mr. Raesak?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations. Sorry to pull you out on a snowy night, but welcome.
Thank you so much. I got my patch and driving in the snow in the city, so I'm.
Again, welcome. Now move to the consent agenda. I need a motion that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items E through H.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items E through H as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Jackie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Rysing?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Carubas?
Yes.
Mr. Raesak?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We're going to suggest we switch up a little.
Yes, if it's okay. And given the weather, I was wondering if we can move our first discussion item up ahead in order to be respectful to our guests, which include the mayor of Aurora, Richard Irvin, David Debo, Executive Director from the Mayor's Office of Economic Development, John Curly, the Aurora Chief Development Services Officer, and Alex Elandro, the Chief Management Officer from Aurora.
Yeah, we'll let you guys sit.
And you do get longer than three minutes, I think.
Yeah. And they're here to discuss the City of Aurora Economic Development update. Gentlemen, welcome.
First of all, let me just say good evening and thank you very much for inviting us here, you know, tonight. Took a little doing to get here, but we got here. And I'm going to let my staff take over and let you know what's going on with the City of Aurora. the City of Aurora and what we're going to be asking of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. I want to thank everybody for giving us the opportunity to speak with you regarding the status of our discussions we've been having with the contract purchaser of the Yorkshire Shopping Center located on New York Street and Route 59. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the site. We did put a location map in a little booklet we prepared as we go through this quick summary. John, you might want to pinpoint it. As we just mentioned, we've got the full boat here of city officials with us tonight, and I welcome them as well. We are here tonight because we want to let you know and to gain your support for two inducement resolutions that we are planning to introduce into our legislative process over the next couple of weeks. About three weeks ago, the mayor invited Dr. Sullivan and Jay Strang to come into our office to give them not only a sense of the assistance that we have been, that we have been evaluating to provide for the developer, to assure and assist that the Yorkshire Shopping Center will get redeveloped, but to herald in a new era of the city working hand-in-hand with District 204, to promote a win-win outcome. While we all have our constituents, we want to stress that when there is a healthy economic activity in a market, as long as the cost benefits are evaluated honestly, fairly, and realistically, we believe the next, the net result will be by definition very positive. Last week, I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Sullivan, one-on-one, in advance of tonight's meeting, and I want to thank her for taking the time to orient me as to some of the issues that have transpired previously and to allow us to address you here tonight. We all know, some anecdotally and others in more detail, the radically changing landscape in the retail environment in the United States. I could quote statistics to you as to the number of malls and shopping centers that have shuttered or suffer from such high vacancy that economic redevelopment is virtually impossible. But in the 59 corridor, all we need to do is look around, and we see how this is a microcosm of the national trend. It is interesting table talk to figure out why this occurred. Some feel it's just oversupply, others overhang from the recession, and the culprit that most people speak about and point to is the flooding of the online shopping that has taken place, although that's not necessarily statistically correct. But the most obvious question is to what to do with all this space, and more to the point for all of us, how do we salvage the tax base we have now, and more to the point, increase it so the pie gets bigger? Against this backdrop, the city has been working with Pacific Square LLC in what we believe is an exciting, timely, and extremely creative means, not only to address these trends, but to energize the corridor in a manner that can very well be trend-setting on a national basis. Pacific Square is what they, the developer will rename Yorkshire as the largest Asian shopping-oriented shopping center in the United States. Ultimately, it is planned to be an urban community of mixed uses with special design, technology, and planning. Think a 2018 version of Chinatown right here. It is obviously a way to create a different niche or segment while capitalizing on what has proven to be an increasing demand in the greater regional market. As one might expect, the developer would have liked the city to create a TIF, or a Tax Increment Finance District, to include the existing shopping center, which is 365,000 square feet of space. The mayor and the staff declined this offer. Now, we understand why they would ask that, because you've got an existing shopping center that we know they're going to invest about $10 million to redevelopment. So, clearly, property taxes would increase. But we declined that request. Instead, we want to use two inducements that we have proffered, and I'm just going to give you a little detail of them, although it's not exactly relevant to your situation. We are negotiating both a sales tax sharing agreement whereby the city would give the developer a defined portion of the incremental sales tax generated as a result of the renovation and repositioning and rebranding and re-leasing of the shopping center. In addition, the city would, would provide enabling legislation to provide a business improvement district that would allow for an increased sales taxes that could be captured by the developer to, again, help them with the project economics. And again, we summarize this simply to put a context of what we're thinking of doing. What we want to stress, however, is the second inducement that we are being asked, and we are advancing here tonight, and that is for a TIF for future development, which can include, and likely will include, if the economics are feasible, new office and residential development within the shopping center. These plans are in the very, very early stage, but to give you a sense of what they're thinking about, they're talking about redeveloping the mattress firm and the liquor store on New York Street for some office development. The second portion, which they are considering, is a possible apartment complex within the public parking area, which presumably would include a parking deck. While this is very early on in their planning, in order for their, for the developer to move forward with the financing, they have asked us to induce the TIF at this time. We want to stress that the development is not yet subdivided, or we would have actually subdivided the first portion, the existing shopping center, and, and, and not having to do the TIF right now. But because it's one, one pin, we are advancing the TIF right now, even though there are no detailed plans yet or projections or redevelopment agreement with the developer. But again, our goal is to keep you apprised and to solicit your support for a project and a way of thinking that should benefit not only the citizens of Aurora and the residents of the 204 community, but the greater community at large. And we're open for any questions and so on, but that's our brief summary.
You said there was going to be some, first of all, I applaud you for trying to take one mattress firm off the, you know.
That's our main goal. That's really, that's really all we're doing here.
I don't know what we'll do without it, but, so my question then is, you mentioned that there would be some residential components of this, about how many, is that like, is that age-restricted residents, or how many children might that generate?
You know, and I will say, we really don't know, because we don't have plans. They don't have plans. They have not done feasibility. So, again, this is really, I want to say, it's, it's a courtesy so you understand what we've been hearing, and to let you know why we would take this action at this time. Typically, we wouldn't take an action like this before we had plans and detail, but they're doing the whole thing at one time, and that's why we're here tonight.
And they've not given any hints about age-restricted, or you mentioned business, too?
Well, I think in the meeting that we had with Karen and Jay, we spoke about that a little bit, and they tell us that the market is for a older demographic, as to whether it would be, it doesn't seem like it would be specifically age-restricted, but they believe it would be for an older market. But that's something that we would like to get into when we understand the plans and the feasibility.
Okay.
They are, they are talking, again, this would be unique to the area, and they have talked about taking a portion of the parking lot, pretty much where the hand is up there now, and developing a larger structure. So, this is not, from what we understand from their research, it's not intended to be like townhomes or single-family homes. This, this looks like it's going to be some type of a higher multi-story building. So, I think with some parking beneath it. So, we believe, from what they're telling us, that it would be more inclined for active adults. They're obviously targeting and making this area an Asian market where people can not only shop and get entertainment and services, but also live there as well.
I also had another question. You know, you said you want to move forward with the, with the TIF. How long do you anticipate? Have they, have you discussed that, how long this would be for?
See, the.
The TIF?
Well, actually.
Unless I misunderstood you.
Move forward with the inducement. So, it's not an actual TIF.
Okay.
Explain the, explain what an inducement is.
It, it, it provides the right to go and do the detail work that you need to do in order to, to have the TIF. But it's really, at this point, it's just an inducement resolution. Having said that, we didn't want to just do that and not let you know what was going on, so.
So, let me, let me explain it in layman's terms. You know, my, we talk in economic development terms.
Thank you.
An inducement is just simply saying that, that a particular area is carved out in the future. If we do get a TIF, which we'd have to go through the application process of a TIF, all the money that was expended pre-TIF will be covered in the TIF at some point in the future, if there is a TIF. So, an inducement is just saying that this area that, that we carve out, which will be the area that you see highlighted, not the retail area that exists now, the area that's highlighted, you know, if we get a TIF in the future and they want to be reimbursed for monies expended, once the TIF exists, and again, that's a different process where we have to come back and again, ask for the actual TIF and apply for the TIF. Once that, a TIF process starts, then we can go back, try to be reimbursed for the monies already expended. So, at this point, it's just an inducement, just laying a map.
I'm going to throw that back at you.
Right.
Why wouldn't, if there's an inducement for an incentive to take, to, to do the research and to get reimbursed for the cost, why wouldn't they move forward with that?
Well, they might be able to get paid for all the other inducements and other things that we, they may not need the money for, if they make their profit and benefit in some increment off the, the business improvement district that we put in place.
So, I'm one of, well, two, maybe three of us on board here. That's an Aurora resident. Been Aurora resident for 21 years. Love the City of Aurora. Want to see the best for the City of Aurora. But I also have to think what the school board had on, too. And as you guys know, with the whole area up in that area around the mall, the Station 1 and 2, the Metro 59, we've had a lot of high-density properties go up. Now, while I understand this retail area has experienced some blight, you know, I've got no problem with you going after the 1% additional sales tax increase. But as an Aurora resident, as a school board member, I have some concerns when it comes to any future possible rezoning for residential, when it's commercial right now. Because what that does essentially, whether there's a TIF or not, but especially if there is a TIF, that reduces how much revenue that we recognize. And you guys know, we only see revenue from the state or from property taxes. We don't have as many resources as, as a municipality does. So, you know, I, I have some great concerns because I don't understand why there, while I understand the need to develop the retail space, I don't understand the TIF for residential because that's not benefiting anyone. It's not benefiting the district, maybe benefiting the city, but I didn't even ask you if that TIF comes to fruition, where you would earmark that money, because you have to state that in, in, in going through the TIF process. But I have a hard time agreeing to something, because we cannot generate that revenue as a district. If there are kids that come to that residential area, that's hard for us to make up that revenue. And that's revenue essentially that we have to pass on to our other residents throughout the district. And as you guys know, we're not getting any extra money from the state, like the other two school districts in Aurora are getting millions more. So, we're having to do a lot more with less. And as it is, we're already spending less per student than our two fellow Aurora school districts to educate our kids. So, to me, even agreeing in concept for the, the inducement of looking into the TIF, I've got a serious problem, because I see it moving in that direction. And I see it to a point of, it's not possible for us to make up that revenue if there's kids that come out of the residential, to, to, to be able to educate those kids properly. So, I wish the City of Aurora didn't feel like they had to throw a TIF out there that, you know, hey, this is a great area, there's great schools, it's already doing well retail-wise. I, I wish you would go on those merits and, and not feel like a TIF has to be included.
Well, can I take a shot? So, you know, we're a little bit at a disadvantage, because again, having not seen the plans or the economics of the entire mixed-use development, it's hard to respond specifically. But clearly, the concept is it would be a net positive, right? If we looked at the increased real estate taxes, because I think the way the developers looking this, looking at this, and their incentive to move forward is holistically. It's a mixed, possibly a mixed-use development going forward, and creating a vision of this Asian kind of community, as opposed to all the vacancies that, you know, we've got in that corridor. That, the concept, so, so the idea of having a bustling kind of urban environment with some shopping, residential office, that kind of thing, I think is part of it. What we'd like to see is when we see the development, see the economics, and see what the taxes would increase. They're talking about a development in the order of magnitude that could be $100 million. This one phase, this first phase, is going to be an additional renovation of the center where the Best Buy is, or right around there, of $10 million. So, in order to get them excited, induce them to, to invest in this property and go forward, it's, hopefully to create a net win-win across the board. We can't make that argument in specificity right now, because we haven't seen the plans and haven't been able to do any projections as to how many schoolchildren, if any, would be generated there. We'd like to do that, but we can't do it yet, because we don't have the plans.
And I understand it's a win-win for the city, but that's not how I view it from a school board perspective. Yes, we will get the recognized property tax revenue from those businesses, okay? But when you start talking TIF for residential, there's no way we can make that up.
And let me just say that we take this responsibility very seriously. We are at the beginning stages of this. We want to be a responsible partner to you as the municipality with these various powers and abilities. But I can tell you that the corridor there is suffering. This particular property is very stagnant. If you go a little farther north on the Naperville side, for example, on the right-hand side, on the east side of the street, you have nothing but large vacant big boxes. Eventually, eventually, unless somebody comes forward with a different plan, big box is out. And we fortunately have a group here with a very intriguing idea, with a $100 million investment, and I don't want to lose sight at this early stage that, right now, the development of the retail is far outweighing the residential component here. Again, if this was going to be 10 acres of single-family homes or a slew of townhomes more geared towards children, at this stage, we're not getting that indication. We will take what you said very seriously and take it to heart and go back and continue to work the numbers. That's why we've got some real crack staff looking at this. But the real gain here, much like what happened many years ago with our outlet mall, there was great concern about the outlet mall and the city investment and, and everything that went with it. And yet, today, it's one of the top producers of value, property taxes, and a number of districts, other taxing bodies are benefiting from it.
Sadly not in ours. And one more statement. I, I wholeheartedly agree with what you're saying, but to me, if I'm thinking development-wise, that. But to me, if I'm thinking development-wise, that residential part, yes, it's great that they want to revitalize the retail part because that helps all of us, right? That helps all of us as a city and hopefully you don't ask for a levy. But the icing on the cake to me still, in my mind, is that residential because that's where that developer is going to really make their money. So I'll leave it to you then.
Okay, others. Ms. Donahue.
Yeah, so thanks for coming and sharing this with us. I appreciate hearing that and early on or whatever. I understand the attractiveness of developing that segment. I also understand the attractiveness of possibly living somewhere where you can walk downstairs and visit a garden and go shopping and not have to get in a car and drive. So I can see why they might be looking at the residential aspect of it. But I think that the message that we're bringing back to you is that a win for the city of Aurora without a win for the schools is not a win. Because you put kids in schools without the proper funding, you're not going to be a winning city either with that happening. So, I mean, I just ask you to carefully look at that and consider that. And I know right now, there seems to be a lot of still unknowns about exactly what the size could be or whether there would be a lot of families in there. But, you know, this TIF does sound, you know, it puts off alarms for us, so just thanks.
We just wanted to point out that the current situation with Yorkshire Plaza, and we've been very careful to intentionally not carve out the retail component and add that to the TIF. We've been clear to the developer that that is not to the intention of the city. But the current market status of Yorkshire Plaza is delivering sales, or property taxes, based on sales tax numbers that are probably half of what they should be. And it's going the wrong direction. So we are very intentionally not using TIF on the portion of the property that can deliver property tax back fastest to both the city of Aurora and District 204. This will be a very specialized market. Asian hypermarket is one of the terms in the industry that's used for this. And it's an opportunity, actually, to win in the very short term, to then discuss later because all we're asking for is an inducement. This is not the TIF resolution, as the mayor pointed out. All we're asking for is support for an inducement resolution to draw the line in the sand for the increment at this point for the TIF, as well as the Business Improvement District. We would expect upon success of the retail portions and improvements that are being done in Phase 1, the shortest return for all of us, to at least double the sales tax that's... I'm sorry, the property tax that's coming back to both entities, or all of the taxing bodies.
Ms. Peale.
Actually, I have a question. I know two of you, but I don't know the other two names and what your positions are.
I can start. I'm Alex. Alex Andrew. I'm the Chief Management Officer for the city.
Okay.
I've been with the city for 18 years.
Okay.
In various roles, but I'm now the Chief Management Officer.
Okay.
And I'm John Curley. I'm the Chief Development Services Officer for the city. I've also worked for the city 18 years in different capacities in community development.
Okay, so you would be the people to be talking to. My question is, this is... And pardon me if this... I don't want to be sounding like snippy or anything, but it sounds like a really pretty package that came to you. And you're looking at it and going, wow, this would solve some pretty big issues for us. But when, you know, whenever we try to do things, we try to make sure we are pulling in what we want, not just taking what's offered us. So can you kind of talk to me about that part of this process? Because, you know, planning, actually, one of my brothers used to be on the planning for the city of Aurora for quite a while. So in the process of a plan for your city, how is this fitting in? Or is this something that just popped in and you're like, wow, this looks really good? Or is it a part of a piece for the city?
That's a, I think that's a couple of great questions. So we are studying the corridor, you know, the 59 corridor over there because there obviously are a lot of issues. And I think the key thing to understand is this is not, even like with the recession, a supply and demand momentarily imbalance. This is what is right now. So if we, I think what the city wants to do is to get ahead of this curve and not just wait for people to come to us, but to say really, what is the optimum mix of retail and office and residential? And how would that all work? So we're in the process of doing a master plan, which will take into account all of that. So we are looking at it very globally. We understand what's going on. In terms of this micro situation over here, as we said, the developer came in and asked, do what developers do, asked for everything. And we said, no, we can't do what you asked for. We studied it. And we said, what we can do is do something on the sales taxes and the increment, just on the existing center, but not on, would not TIF that. And as late as today, they came in and asking us. And the mayor said, you know something, I understand what you're asking for, but I absolutely cannot consider that. So...
Because it would negatively affect the school district.
Exactly. And that's, he looked at them, and we were at the meeting, all four of us, today. And the mayor looked at him and said, no, this is not what we said in our initial meetings and this is not what we would do to the school district. Having said that, you know, we are in that classical situation where you're trying to balance. You want this developer to come in. You want this developer to spend $60 million in our greater community. We want the net win-win. So what we're doing is trying to walk that line and we think we've kind of hit it.
I think a number of us have been involved in this for many, many years. And we have had a renewed effort since last April to indicate not just the 59 corridor, but a number of different areas of Aurora that need some reinvigoration. Our downtown, Farnsworth corridor, the far west side, West Plaza, that touch all school districts and touch a number of different taxing bodies. To that end, we have put out the call far and wide to the development community that Aurora is the place you need to be, we're the second-largest city. You all are familiar with how successful historically 59 has been, but it's hit a bit of a bump. We have other areas, especially the downtown, that once Fox Valley Mall came around, like a lot of urban centers, it drew businesses back and nothing came behind. If any of you have been to downtown lately, in the last year or two, you'll see a renaissance going on, driven by the Paramount Theater. Next to the Paramount Theater, we've got the Aurora Arts Center coming in. We've got developers coming to us far and wide, asking about a number of areas of the city, including Route 59. So we've got to be judicious and be conservative because we realize we're not in a bubble. We can't be unilateral and just focused on inward. We've got to keep the best interest of our school districts in mind, be mindful of other taxing bodies. But at the end of the day, we're trying to drive development, responsible development, to create new businesses, reinvigorate places. You may remember, for example, there was an old Ponderosa Steakhouse. It's an old-line brand. I don't even know if it's around anymore. I used to go there in high school after a basketball game. The coach would drop us off with five bucks and we'd eat at Ponderosa. You know, fabulous experience. That facility has sat dormant until our economic development team worked out a deal with Bulldog Ale House. Now Bulldog Ale House is going to open. You may have seen the renaissance of the old Luigi's facility. It's now Miller's Ale House. I was there the other night, on a Wednesday night at 8:30. You had a 20-minute wait.
Yeah, it's packed.
Okay, so we're trying to capitalize on that excitement and reinvigorate some of these old centers. You really just need to drive around this one. No offense to the current owners, but it's a tired, not much of a draw facility. And we're trying to reinvigorate it, just like we're trying to reinvigorate other parts of town. But we certainly appreciate, and that's why we're coming to you early. And we plan on coming to you often with information through Dave and John and our office also. So we're excited about this, but we do have a bit of a governor, so to speak, on the gas pedal for the very reasons you've talked about.
Mr. Carubus.
Definitely. Thanks for attending and coming to another public meeting. You met with our superintendent. You didn't have to do this. I appreciate that. Give me, let me give you some historical perspective as a long-term resident. 204 has never had a TIF, okay? Aurora's had a TIF since '86. You guys have done it a lot longer than we have. And TIF is kind of a bad word in our neck of the woods because we look at it as some, a program that takes away money. So when I hear trying to create the win, when I hear protecting the residents, protecting the school district, that's something I can get behind. And I'm open to be educated. I'm open to learn and get confidence over this stuff. It sounds like we don't know enough, any of us here, on whether there is a win-win. But I, you know, if you have a commitment to look out for 204's residents with the negotiation of the redevelopment, that's enough for me to get behind what you're doing. You know, that area needs to get redeveloped. I've got concerns, just like anybody else, you know? We don't want to see the whole area TIF'd. It's got to be responsible development. You know, I was just at Fox and the Hound over the weekend. It could use some help. There's no doubt about it. That area can. But you're going to have to, you're going to have to slow-walk us a little bit through this. Hold our hand as you make us feel more comfortable with the idea so that we can get educated. How's this not hurting us? But I like the partnership idea. I like the fact that, you know, you're trying to balance it. I can understand that and it is walking the line. You don't want it to just fall into disrepair. We need to do something. So I'm open to the, you know, innovative idea aspect of it. I guess that's it. I mean, I thank you for taking the time and trying to educate us. We are volunteer school board members that, you know, try to get over some of this, balancing the taxpayers, the students, the teachers. And we have a fine line to walk as well, to make sure that there's balance in the district. So I applaud you for trying to come up with these ideas and taking the time to present tonight.
And let me just say too, and I think that's to your point, I think that's why, I know myself, Mr. Mayor Irvin, you know, that's why I supported you because of your message of development that you had. And, you know, I think that's why a lot of residents in Aurora supported you. So I think Justin kind of summarizes kind of how we're all feeling. You kind of have a sense. But, you know, we want what's best for the city of Aurora, but we also want to partner with you, so...
Ms. Demming.
First of all, I just want to reiterate the appreciation for you taking the time to apprise us and make us aware of the opportunity. Thank you for being so forward-thinking because obviously, financial win is extremely important for us. As you heard a little bit, there are a number of challenges that we are facing. So that's extreme, that brings extreme concern for us as Justin indicated regarding anything that may not land positively in the financial realm for us. So just a quick question though, what timeframe is the developer talking about?
Timeframes, they're...
For the retail portion.
They want to close on the property, and one of the reasons we try to get this meeting as soon as we can was at the end of February. They want to close on the property. And then finish their plans and get going on the retail more or less immediately. And then first start the process in terms of looking, you know, down the line.
And based on the success of the retail, will be determined when they go forward with the additional phases of the property, which could be, you know, as soon as the end of 2019.
And I just don't, it's been said, but please, as you were doing the negotiation, please keep in mind that we're a school district that is definitely a partnership because we're part of your city. And we need to just ensure that everything that's positive for the city continues to be positive for the students and the residents that are included as part of 204.
May I say this before, I don't know if anyone else is going to take an opportunity to speak, but I just want to follow up with a couple, just a little bit of what was said, you know? That the reality is this, you know, development is important to make a city go forward for our success. But another reality is the success of our school districts. People moving out of the city based on the success of a school district. So if we did anything that would affect a school district, that would prevent people from moving and development from coming to capitalize on what you're doing so well here in 204, that would negatively affect us. So we can't do that, you know? So whatever we do from this point on, it has to be with an eye on making sure that it shows success toward the school district, recognizing that that's why people are moving to the city of Aurora. You know, people move to District 204 because District 204 is going to take care of their children. You know, now, you know, at kindergarten into the future, you know, and as I heard many of the people speak, you know, even, you know, as in adulthood, in some circumstances, you know? So we are going to make sure that every decision that we make as a city, you know, puts you guys in a positive light because you and us, we're intertwined. You know, our success depends on each other, you know? It does on East Aurora School District or the West Aurora School District. So the decisions we make and everything we do, it has to be in partnership to ensure that we continue to grow together. You know, unfortunately, you know, these retail areas are becoming dinosaurs, you know? And, you know, slowly dying off and becoming extinct. We want to do something to reinvigorate them, you know, create destination, destination locations. So more people want to come to the city of Aurora. And we've got an opportunity here to create one of the largest Asian developments of this kind in the United States of America, in the whole country. It'll be right here in Aurora, right here in District 204. So if we could work out these numbers to make sure that gets to affect the school district. Matter of fact, it's a win, positive effects of school district. And if we have Chinatown right here in Aurora, we're going to do it, you know? As pointed out earlier, the developer came in and changed up ideas about taking a little bit of the, taking out some of the areas that we already said we weren't going to TIF because it would negatively affect the school district. We said absolutely not. And we'd willing to walk away from this potential developer that could bring this development, beautiful development to the city, willing to walk away if it hurts our school district. So everything we do, we're going to keep an eye to making sure that, you know, our success is your success. But we're going to need a little help. We're going to, we're happy to walk you through it. You know, I'm being walked through it, you know, some of this is above my head, you know, out of my pay grade. But, you know, my folks here are helping me and my staff that aren't economic development gurus to understand it because, you know, we're regular folk, just like, you know, you're regular folk. All of us don't, aren't involved in economic development, you know? We're the only generating entity in the city. The city of Aurora generates, I, you guys relied on taxes. So we need to generate for you, you know, and we're trying to do that here in the 59 corridor.
So is this about the Yorkshire property only?
Right, what, right now?
Yes.
Yes, this TIF that we're at, the inducement, not a TIF, this inducement we're asking for right now is only for the Yorkshire property.
Within those dotted lines. So some people think that the outlets are part of Yorkshire, but they are not. So it's just within the dotted lines all the way around.
I think what Mike was asking, there was a discussion when Karen and Jay came to meet with you guys. Right now, we're just talking about the Yorkshire property, not the other. Not the other discussion that was had, okay?
That's correct.
Do you perceive this as being a one-time incentive for this property? Or do you perceive baby coming back to us for other development?
At this property?
No. Another area comes, another area is not doing so well. And now that this incentive has been provided, then other developers come and would request the same. Do you see this being expanded?
Well, we recognize that this is the first time that, you know, I can't say it's the first time that, you know, someone's ever suggested that there be an inducement. But you've never had a TIF here in District 204, so we want to take baby steps. This is the only viable developer we have currently that is asking for such inducement. I can't say for sure whether or not another developer may come forward in the future and ask for something similar in some other area. And, you know, we'll take it, you know, one step at a time, but this...
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt. When you have somebody putting...
I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt. The, when you have somebody putting this much money in one particular project, our focus is this property. People could look up and down the corridor and say, "What about that deal? What about that deal?" But, the reason that we're here tonight is that we believe that this developer has the wherewithal and the desire to redevelop this project at this time. And that's why we're focusing on this project.
Okay.
And if I could just add, I think if you're concerned about this setting some kind of a precedent, we have always looked at TIFs in and of themselves as a standalone opportunity based on the merits of that business position. It doesn't mean that once you do it, it automatically opens the floodgate. Of course, we can't stop developers from ever pitching us in it with ideas. But, the key there is, like Dave just alluded to, is it economically viable? Does it make sense for all parties? It doesn't mean that a developer can somehow come in and say, "Well, you did it over there, so I want it here." They're going to say that and attempt that, but they wouldn't be worth their salt if they didn't. But, our responsibility then is to go back and let each potential deal stand on its merits. So, right now, we are focusing on this one, given what's at stake, as we've talked about quite a bit tonight. But, going forward, we, right now, we don't have anything else in the hopper. And even if stuff does come over, I would think that we would probably likely engage in this same type of conversation with Dr. Sullivan and Jay and then come to you as appropriate. But, right now, it's not a, something we're foreseeing.
So, I want to give you a reference. And the reference is we've had a community engage 204 activity in which hundreds of 204 residents are providing feedback to us in order that we can move to the future. And some of the information and some of the opinions that we're receiving from our residents are the following, is continue to try to develop our community in order that we can capture tax money in order to best serve our students and to reduce the tax burden that we feel. And do that as quickly as possible, is what I'm hearing. And so, I think it's important that you have that reference is that what we're hearing and to, I think, all our board members' points. You need to walk us through this in baby steps
And I don't think...
in order, in order for us to accept this as the best interest of our constituency. Because at this point, not that we can develop, but they say, "Get everybody, get those stores filled and make sure they generate enough tax money in order that my taxes go down and that you can spend more money on our children." So, I mean, basically, in a nice way, that's what I'm hearing.
And I don't think any of us, you know, because I heard the two things, the sales taxes and then the business impact district, you know, for the, for the, you know, the inducement of the fees, right, for the, for that, to do the study, I guess. If you have a viable developer, yeah, my guess is that's probably, you're looking at between fifty and maybe a hundred and fifty to do that impact study of to see what the potential development possibilities are. I don't think any of us would say, "Hey, you know, hold back on that." I mean, because obviously, this could be a great thing, right? So, you know, I say go forward with that and, yeah, have them do the study and...
And that's essentially what we're asking is to move...
Right.
Exactly. You just hit the nail on the head. We're just asking to move the process so you hire the experts to do the studies. There's a whole world out there in terms of looking at that. And quite frankly...
They want to protect their investment.
Well, but part of what we do here at the city is to make sure that those projections are accurate, you know, because we all lived through the crash, right, and we all saw projections that don't mean anything. So, that's exactly what we'd like to do is let's move forward. Let's, when they get, give us their plans, if and when they give us the plans, then we could say, "Okay, does this make sense? What is the economics? How is the school board going to fare in this situation?" So, we're coming to say, "Let's give them a shot to do the work so we could look at it. Get these guys, invest in this deal so we can move forward, so we have a chance to look at it."
Is that a combined effort, that study that's done by the developer and the city? I mean, or does the city do that, or does the developer hire their own company to do that, then ask for the funds back? Is that...
It's combined.
Is it? Okay.
I have another question.
Go ahead, Ms. Price.
First of all, I appreciate you bringing this packet to us tonight because that's also very helpful. In this picture with the urban residential, is that just a rendition?
Just a rendering. I mean...
Okay. But, that's how, that's what their vision is.
Well, you know, again, it's a, it's the best, we ask them for depiction in the parking lot. Might it look something like that?
Yeah, I mean, it's what you know right now, kind of what they've given you right now.
This is what they would like to see, yes.
Because our, twenty-eight percent of our students are Asian. And I'm thinking if this is geared towards that group of people, then, you know, it might attract more students than not. So, I mean, because, again, we've heard from our Asian families, they've moved here because of our school district. You know, it's, it seems to be a growing population. So, just, again, I just implore you to keep that in mind as, you know, as those plans continue, you know, find out, you know, ask those questions about, you know, is this going to be a, you know, age restricted? Is this going to be, are these going to be apartments? Are there going to be townhomes? How, you know, and how does that impact us? That's all. But, thank you.
We'll include you in that. You know, the assumptions in these kind of deals are the most important things, and we'll include you in that process.
And I want to thank you for including us in the process. I really feel that, we all feel that you're working in partnership with us. And thank you for being proactive. That's very important to this board, so we appreciate that greatly. Thank you. Mr. Krubus?
They need action.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't vote tonight on this? This is the discussion item?
Right.
Maybe we can, can we get consensus? Would that be enough for you? Because I don't think you really need formal action.
We don't need formal action. We just...
Do you even really need our permission?
No.
I don't think so.
They want it.
But, they want it. I understand.
We want to videotape everybody.
I appreciate shaking their heads.
You know...
I mean, that's usually why we get upset with the word TIF. So, there's, we know there's no real permission that's actually ever provided, but...
Being in business myself...
I'm willing to show, yeah, the inducement. I understand the process, and I think this sounds like the right move for you guys to make and hopefully for us to.
I'd agree. You know, any developer's going to want to do a study. So, I would never hold that back. You know, you got my okay to move forward with that study.
They don't need it.
Yeah.
So, that would be a consensus on the inducement.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your consideration.
Hope traffic's better.
We do too. And, you know, we'll be back soon to find out something.
Can you clear off my car?
I was looking for a brush earlier.
Technically, yeah, the plaza, Aurora Plaza's come down.
Snowplows here.
Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
My subdivision's just right over there. Is it going to hit that? I'll be good. The students want, would like to know if they can leave, Mr. Razak?
Oh, yes.
All two of us?
All two of them, yes. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Do the masonry project next.
Do you need a signature or anything?
Yeah.
Signature. Do you need a signature?
Yeah, what do you want it?
Okay. I'll give it to you.
Okay, why don't we move to the second discussion item, which is the Fisher Masonry project update.
Good evening, board members. We wanted to take an opportunity tonight to fill you in on the progress of some masonry issues and some progress that we've come up with with the Fisher Middle School wall. This came to our attention, the wall came to our attention in the late fall, and some doors were not working. And we had engineers from IMEG, and Alyssa Fee is here today to talk about some of her work in working with the wall. And Todd DePaul is here to talk about some of his observations and the work that the Department of Operations and Maintenance is taking on with it. The reason we're bringing it to your attention is that in order for us to continue to work, we're going to do some excavating. And some of the work is very obvious and very visual. And we wanted you to be aware of it, so if you had any questions, if the community had any questions, they knew exactly what was going on. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. DePaul.
Thank you, Jay. As Jay indicated, in late fall, we were contacted by Fisher Middle School in saying that door number five was having trouble opening. It was binding. We sent our maintenance crew over there to investigate. As you see in our presentation, door number five is on the west side of the building. If we put the floor plan, overlay the floor plan, it's the area between the two gyms behind the locker rooms. On both the north and the south of door number five, we have some storage rooms. There is a stairwell that goes up to the wrestling room, and there's two storerooms above that. When our maintenance staff initially went over to investigate door five, they also found some other interior doors, again, on both the north and south of door five that leads up to the wrestling room and the one custodial closet that was also binding. Further investigation, they found cracks in the interior walls, again, on, in the corridor around door number five and upstairs in some of the storerooms. We modified the doors so that they were able to open and to create a safe condition. As we looked further, these were some of the cracks that were on the outside of the custodial closet and on the opposite wall from door five. Obviously, this is a situation, Fisher Middle School is twenty-five years old. This is the first time we have identified this type of problem there. It was obviously very concerning, and we contacted our structural engineer, Alyssa Fee from IMEG. Alyssa will go through what her involvement was once we made that contact.
Sure, thank you. As Todd said, my name is Alyssa Fee. I'm a senior structural engineer with IMEG Corp. I was first brought out to kind of look at the two interior walls of the custodial and the stair, and there were some interior cracks. When we first looked at this area, we did a walkthrough of the locker rooms as well. The, this issue is isolated to, first of all, say, it's isolated to the west wall, only between doors four and six. We have looked through the entire building as well. We see no other signs of cracking outside of the typical, typical normal wear and tear of a twenty-five-year-old building. And that's, you know, conducive of the type of construction with masonry walls. So, when we first looked at these two interior walls, realized that they're non-load-bearing walls. So, we looked at the slab itself and noticed a couple of cracks in the slab. So, we brought in a Geotech to core the floor and see, is the slab sinking? And we did this directly next to, in between the two doors. There was also a plumbing pipe that ran there, so we were going to see if there was perhaps a leak that was causing some issues. That resulted in nothing that we could see. There was nothing, no gaps in the slab, between the slab and the soil, and no water. So, our next step was to laser the west wall, exterior of the west wall. And this was because we noticed at the very top parapet, the wall had started to lean out a little bit. So, we wanted to find out just how much it was leaning. Is it leaning just from the top, or is it bowing in the middle? So, we did a laser survey of the entire west wall. And that told us that the area was isolated directly between door six and door four, with door five being the worst. And we're leaning roughly about three-quarters of an inch at the top. So, we continued to investigate as to why this was occurring. The predominant thought is that there's perhaps a soil issue. We do know back when the Geotech who was involved from the very beginning of the project did note that there was some extra undercutting that needed to be done in that area. So, we wanted to kind of test the soil again to see if there was any kind of settlement or any, any kind of gaps that have occurred over these past twenty-five years. So, we removed another section inside the building, again, to kind of see, has the soil condition changed on the interior? And this resulted in, again, no, no noticeable change in the soil. We actually found a lot of stone from the undercutting of the foundations. The foundations were dropped lower than typical construction because of the soil conditions in the area. It was soon after the thought after that, that we decided that we were going to shore up the exterior wall. And Todd's got a picture of the shoring. This was because we just wanted to stop any potential movement until we could figure out what was the leading cause of it. We wanted to do some exterior excavation as well and knew that, that if there was unstable soil, that could potentially make the wall even more unstable. So, we hired a shoring company that came in and installed the bracing between door six and door four, concentrating on door five. And that's what's currently in place. Really want to emphasize that with the shoring, the area is and continues to be acceptable for student use and safe for the students and teachers. That's why we took the extra step of shoring up the wall until we could solve the problem because it had continued to crack during the first investigation, and we wanted to stop any future movement. Our step that we're currently in is taking these borings on the exterior of the building. They were actually performed on Friday. And we should be getting a report from the Geotech sometime this week, which will evaluate and determine if there's an issue with the soil on the exterior of the building that's causing this wall to rotate outward.
So, any questions that we can help you with?
Yeah, get to it. That's crazy. Especially here, I was waiting for the cliffhanger. There was something in the soil, but then you said there was soil. It was fine. I mean, so, yeah.
We're still, we're still investigating. We do know that there is a water main, a hydrant
main that runs outside the building. So, we're trying to determine if that's causing some leaking and washing ways.
Did you say there's a splooming on the back wall as well? What is the piping?
There was a small pipe leading from the janitor's closet under floor, but that did not appear to be leaking when we did, when we tested the soil.
And again, that, that pipe from the janitor's closet ran east. So, if there was a problem, we would have found it when we dug up on the inside.
So, what is that current pipe against the wall between door five and six right there?
That's currently gas, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the condenser, how close is that to the wall up on the top of the roof?
Uh, that is back there. That's...
It's back there, okay. It's not, it's not to the edge or anything.
What, so, okay, they find nothing wrong with the soil, but we still have a wall that's leaning out. What, what then?
We're still investigating. There's no, there's no structural reason that we have found so far that, that leads us to understand why this wall is leaning. The fact that it's only happening in a segment of the wall and not the other gym areas. What's interesting is that the wall that we're talking about has a precast mezzanine, so it's actually braced at the halfway point, whereas the gym walls are full height. So, if there was any kind of structural deficiency in the CMU... so it's actually braced at the halfway point, whereas the gym walls are full height. So if there was any kind of structural deficiency in the C M U, you would actually expect to see those walls to show some signs of failure. But we've looked, we did the survey on the exterior, those walls, there's a, you know, miniscule movement at the top, not compare, minor compared to what we saw between doors, between door six and door four. So there's, so far that we've seen no structural reason with the precast or the roof slab, and that's why we're focusing on, is something happening at the foundations. Settlement of a 25-year-old building is rare, so, but there is the possibility of the soil washing away. I don't know how many of you around for Gregory Middle School many years ago when that had the pipe burst and that washed away the soil underneath that school. But that is, you know, one of the things that we're kind of looking at right now because we can see the rest of the structure, we can't see the soil. And so we have to do this exploration of digging out to be able to see what's happening below grade.
Do we have any other buildings with the same footprint?
Yes. I mean, this floor plan is basically Gregory and the original Ranger Building, or the original Crone Building before the additions were added.
So this is just isolated and not systemic?
Yeah, this is just isolated in this building and between doors four and six.
Is there a possibility you would end up just leaving those braces there?
No, that would not be a visible long-term solution. They're meant to be temporary, so we'll need to come up with a final definitive solution to fix the wall.
But one of them might be to, do what? To replace that wall? I mean, if you cannot find something in the soil, what do you...
If we don't find anything in the soil, we'll have to continue further looking at the roof and at the precast to see if that is somehow moving, although we can't find any visible reasons why a precast slab would move. So we are kind of hanger hat on something with the soil. And we're hoping these borings that we've got, that were taken on Friday, will tell us something a little bit more.
How long does it, how long before you get to expect to have the results from those?
Actually, their preliminary results are coming in, so I would expect a report by the end of the week.
But in the interim, the bracing is...
The bracing will take care of any future movement of the wall.
So, and, and students...
Keeping students safe, keeping students safe and the teachers safe.
So that, that area is still being, it's being used where they, is that on the back, does that cover the, is that on the side of the gym, on one of the walls of the gym as well, or is that...
If you look up here, basically, this is your main gym, competition gym where the bleachers are.
Okay.
And the auxiliary gym. Here's the locker rooms. There's doors out the back of the locker rooms that goes in the hallway that leads to both gyms.
Okay.
As, as well as a, doors out of the front of the locker rooms.
So are students using those locker rooms that are right next to...
Yes, these locker rooms are occupied.
And what we've seen is we've seen no cracking in those walls. We have gone through and looked at them. We've seen no cracking in those walls, nothing to indicate that there is an issue. That's basically, it's isolated exactly in that orange area with the cracks in the masonry and some cracks in the slab on grade.
We good? Thank you.
Okay, we'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Out of order, but we're going to our action item. I need a motion to approve Policies for First Reading six, colon, six zero, six, colon...
I move that the Board of Education approve the following policies for first reading as presentatives. Six, colon, sixty, six, colon, three-ten, seven, colon, two-sixty.
Second. You have a motion in the second. Justin, can you help us through some of the discussion here, at least to go through some of the policies? And then if we need help from the administration, we'll ask them for some, if we have any clarifying questions.
Perfect. So this is coming to us from press, which is, press is our service that we subscribe to through the Illinois Association of School Boards that assists us with keeping up to date with the law. There was a change in law that regarding physical education and, what was the other one? The instruction for law enforcement. So the, if we focus on the physical education first, there's two policies which really impact that. The seven, colon, two-sixty and the six, colon, three-ten. Looking at six, colon, three-ten, you don't get too much until you get to page two. So the overall is, the state has been big on mandating physical education for every day of the week. There were some waivers that allowed us to deviate from that. Our ability to take waivers is expiring soon. But they want, the goal of physical education is to keep the kids moving and try to minimize obesity and things like that. So you've got some kids that are actively participating in school sports, so they're active, they're doing things. And so they have the option to make a request to be excused from physical education. This is a policy change. This isn't dealing with the procedures of what happens as a result of that excuse? Where do the kids go? What kind of supervision's going to be provided? Attendance? This is the higher level view that says to comply with the law and then try to make sense of some of the gaps in the law. So you can look at the language on page two of that policy. Any questions on the specific language there? Don't make me read it.
In six, colon, three-one-zero?
Six, colon, three-ten.
Yes.
Page two.
Yes, okay, no.
There, there's a comment there that says it does not require such participation to be ongoing, and then it makes a reference to common sense. Does that, does that mean that they could actually be excused the entire year? Or is this saying they would only be excused when they are in their particular...
So the law is, doesn't speak to that issue? And then the policy tried to say, well, we gotta have some reasonable interpretation of that law.
It's a common sense.
Exactly, right.
We would, so the district would say only while you're, okay, thank you.
This might be an administrative question. I know for years, Niqua, and I know just this year, Matia have been like blue ribbon physical education schools. So with this exemption, does that totally take us out of that now because our kids aren't in everyday physical education?
No. We've always had the ability for, what, 11th and 12th graders to have them be exempted. That was in the law previously. We've always had very low numbers of kids who choose to do that. So we really don't think that there's going to be a huge impact on our physical education programs with this, but we do have to follow the law.
But it doesn't exempt us from still applying for that particular...
No, this really just expands the number of grades and it gives us a little bit more in terms of, or at least press did, in terms of what a definition would be of what those activities would include. So you can see, it talks about only things that are school-sponsored versus...
That was my next question.
Yeah, so we've incorporated that definition. You'll see on page two.
So if, for instance, I know quite a few Orcasus girls, they dance like literally 25 hours to 30 hours during the week, you know, after school and stuff. So they, because it's not a school-sponsored, because they're taking those dance classes outside of school, it's not Orcasus-related, it's a dance class outside of school, but they're putting in like 25 hours, that doesn't qualify because it's not a district-sponsored sport.
My daughter's Irish dancing wouldn't have qualified either.
And, the review of the other policy on physical education addresses that.
Yeah, I saw that.
So that policy says state law prohibits a school board from honoring parental excuses based upon a student's participation in athletic training, activities, competitions conducted outside the auspice of the school district. So there's plenty of activities, gymnastics and, you know, triathlon training that just aren't part of the school curriculum. So I think the other one is direct, but the definition is important. The policy, and what is exactly interscholastic.
So we don't see anything happening with staffing because you said the numbers are so low of, of, of kids that take advantage of this anyway, right?
Come see us, Louis.
Yes, we don't. As Dr. Sullivan said, with already having the 11th and 12th grade being affected by this, we saw low numbers at all three high schools, maybe 15 combined between the three. Many of those students continue to take strength and conditioning courses.
There's a lot of electric courses, yeah.
So, yeah. And then really, the only inquiries that we've received have been from what Board Member Krubis said is prohibited, which we've heard from a couple of just misinterpretations of the law with parents asking about gymnastics and ice skating and areas like that. So we've, you know, have educated those parents to make sure that they're aware that this change in law does not apply to them, but, you know, really just the expansion of the grade levels. We don't anticipate really any numbers. And that, these numbers have been really consistent over the years because that, this policy has been in place for many years and we just have not, not seen high numbers between all three high schools.
And for me, that, my comment was going, that clarification is really important that it's with, interscholastic within the school.
That's correct. I think because of what you mentioned with the blue ribbon, P E departments, how they've been recognized, the curriculum's been very important for our students and they want to continue on in that.
We do have gymnastics, though. I mean, I don't want to, private gym stuff is...
Right.
Okay. So any other questions on this six, colon, three-ten? Moving on to seven, colon, two-sixty, also related to physical education. So they, you know, they let us have some, they let school districts have some latitude, some discretion, and then they tighten it up by having the prohibition on saying, you can't do this. And then they say, these are the, if somebody does submit an excuse, you know, then they have to have it signed by the doctor or signed by the, you know, clergy person. So they start adding requirements. And then they build in the I E P stuff, which came from another provision, they're just incorporating it here for continuity's sake. Yeah, and moving it down to grade seven and eight. That's, that's it. Any questions on that?
Do we have any further questions? Hearing none, then Jackie, can you call the row?
Six, colon, six-sixty is the addition of instruction concerning law enforcement procedures for traffic stops, including a demonstration of the proper action to be taken during a traffic stop and appropriate interactions with law enforcement. So this is a, an addition to our curriculum as an add-on to driver's education, which seems like a reasonable request. Teach the kids, the students how to deal with interactions with police because that's probably going to come up if you drive.
What about if you don't drive? Or some of our older adults, like even in the STEPS program? You know, this goes just to nine to 12, but, you know, about the procedures for traffic stops, how does, how does speak with law enforcement, especially when you have possibly some non-verbal students if they were to get...
This is related to driver's ed. So I, I mean, I understand the importance of that education, but this mandated curriculum from the state...
I understand that. I understand for driver's ed, but maybe for future consideration, this might be something that we look at for those, I mean, this is just good to know anyway.
Sure.
Whether you're walking or driving, how do you interact with law enforcement? So it, maybe it's, I don't know if it's in a civics class or in a, I don't know. But I think this is important for, especially for individuals that might be perceived as, you know, they're, they're arguing or because they're just getting anxious. I mean, I, I made essentially this case and, you know, a law was passed and we get, we have a card now that students or young adults, anybody can carry for that specific purpose. And I just, you know, for future consideration, it doesn't just pertain to driving, is my point.
This does. I support the administration using its discretion to see if they can be adopted elsewhere.
For the clarification, do we, I might be getting old. Do we always vote on the first reading? Or do we just move forward and vote on the second reading? Do we, have we always voted on the first reading? Okay.
Especially when it's a much detailed...
When there's detail.
Yeah, okay.
It's just the state changing dates or statutes.
Right, okay.
Then it's unconcerned.
I have nothing further.
Jackie, call the row.
Mr. Krubis?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Pugh?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzak?
Aye. Motion passes. And finally, board update. I just have one thing, other board members have others in your packet. I placed a synopsis of the LUN meeting that was held on January 26. An amended intergovernmental agreement was reviewed and shared at that meeting. It's in your packet for review. There was brief discussion on Senate Bill 444, dual credit tax increment financing and the, and the property tax freeze and the updated website. I don't know if the website is updated yet. It's pretty close, but once it is functional, I'll make you aware of that. It really should be helpful to all board members, so, and I know they're working to make sure that we all can get on that. Given that the General Assembly was preparing to go back in session on January 29, the meeting was more informational than action-oriented, hopefully the handout helps you understand what happened in the meeting. Anything else? With that, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
If you have a favor.
Right.
Don't forget your exit slips are also in that packet.